If I could have your attention, please, we'll be starting the meeting in two minutes. Everybody, please take their seats. I'd like to, I'm Vern Tepe, Vice Chair. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Kane County Board. May we have a roll call?
Alan?
Alan, remote is allowed.
Bates?
Bates here.
I'm here.
You will be remote. Davist?
Davist here.
Ford?
Doherty here.
Oh, Doherty's here, thank you.
So Ford, but I have to let you know that before, long before we establish this meeting, because I thought he's going to be on Tuesday. I had set up an executive meeting with our Workforce Development Board at three o'clock. So I will try to keep the meeting as short as possible. So I have to, and I'm gonna do it by Zoom. So I'll disappear in the back and then come back forward. So I'm here for now.
Thank you. Gums?
Here.
Ichbal?
Ichbal present.
Over here.
Yes.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Louis?
Louis here.
Linder?
Linder here, remote.
Molina?
Molina present remotely.
Roth?
Here.
He will be remote. Silva?
Silva is here.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Serge's?
Serge is present, but I will be leaving. I do have another meeting at four o'clock, so I will be calling in remotely with the board's approval.
Tarver?
Tarver's here remotely.
Tepe?
Tepe here.
Williams? Young?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Leonard, would you please leave us in the, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with which he is.
And just a small invocation before we start the meeting. Dear Lord, help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents of Kane County. Help us to be fair and impartial in these decisions and to work efficiently as we can to get these resolutions resolved and move on with our day. Thank, that's it.
Thank you.
Amen. Um, and I can say.
We have remote attendance request from Mr. Doherty, Mr. Linder, Mr. Tarver, and Ms. Allen, and Ms. Molina. Any objections?
No objections.
Mr. Serge is at four o'clock.
And Mr. Ford.
And Mr. Ford and, and Mr. Sanchez. Okay. Any objections? All right. Without objection, I'd like to change the order to handle the proclamations first. So can we first do the proclamation for the recognizing National Police Week? And who's going to be reading it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please come on up.
Yeah, gentlemen, please come up to the front of the room here. Board members and guests, I'd like to read the proclamation to you recognizing the National Police Week 2024 in Kane County, Illinois. Whereas National Police Week 2024 honors the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our families. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Kane County Sheriff's Office. And whereas, according to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, since the first recorded on-duty death in 1786, there have been 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including three members of our Kane County Sheriff's Office. Whereas the Kane County Sheriff's Office exemplifies excellence in law enforcement through their efforts to maintain peace, uphold justice, and foster community partnerships, thereby enhancing the safety and the well-being of all residents. And whereas the hard work and selfless dedication of the Kane County Sheriff's deputies, detectives, and support staff are essential to the quality of life in Kane County, therefore be it resolved that the Kane County Board observes the week of May 12th to 18th, 2024, as a National Police Week in Kane County, Illinois, and salutes the service of, of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Would one of you officers please bring the motorcycle in now? All right, next, Mr. Davist. I believe you have a proclamation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Proclaim, excuse me, proclaiming the month of May 2024 Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas, safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state. And whereas, the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas motorcycles are a primary, common, and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas, it is especially meaningful that the citizens of Kane County be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas, the members of DuKane Abate of Illinois Incorporated, a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in Kane County, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past nine years. And whereas, all motorcyclists should join DuKane Abate of Illinois, Inc. in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of Kane County. And whereas, the motorcyclists of Kane County have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations. And whereas, during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the highways and byways of Kane County and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Kane County, in recognition of 37 years of Abate of Illinois Incorporated, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May this year, 2024, as Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion for TMP 24-2369 proclaiming the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Awareness Month?
Bates Moose?
Who second, Kenyan seconds? Kenyan Moose? Eight seconds?
Anybody here from Abate? Anybody?
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for TMP 24-2402, Proclamation Recognizing National Police Week 2024 in Kane County, Illinois?
Leonard Moose.
Leonard Moose?
Ayes.
Who seconded?
Ayes.
Ayes seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right. Now we're at pub.
We did both.
We did both.
Yeah, we did.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, did them both. Now it's time for public comment. Kathy Flesberg?
Four times a charm. Okay, I don't have much to say, and I don't want to confuse things at all, but I don't understand why we have to bunch everybody together. Because the way I look at it, to be an attorney takes a lot of money and many years of schooling. I think he should be above everyone. Coroner, to become a coroner, you need a degree in criminal justice, pathology. In order to get pathology training and residency, you need to get medical residency. I mean, that's at least seven years. So the coroner, state's attorney, and sheriff, and I'm not saying to go up to 160, trust me, because the 109 is a 20% increase. I'm thinking maybe the state's attorney and coroner should be at 109, and everybody else should be less. You know, if they're at 88, you're giving them a $20,000 increase in this economy with taxpayer money when we don't have the money. I just don't understand. I mean, and then you have the auditor, the recorder, and the clerk. They do have, I mean, I think the auditor's a CPA, that takes schooling. The recorder and the clerk have more responsibilities. And I'm sure the chair is listening, and I don't mean to diminish her job at all. But her job description out of all of these, she presides over meetings, proposes policies and practices, sits on various committees, monitors the performance of the meetings, proposes the creation of committees, and other duties as they arise. You don't need a degree, you don't need schooling, you don't need anything. And I, I'm just putting that out there for you guys to process because I don't know where we, oh, everybody has to make the same. And just so you know, I worked at DuPage County. I used to be a commercial deputy assessor. Everybody in DuPage County is overpaid. I was paid 30,000 more than the next guy in another county that had my same job description. So I would not compare anything to DuPage County. And once you pay high, you can't go back, because then people will walk. So I think you should be comparing to every other county but DuPage County. And I think that's, oh, I've got, yeah, good luck. Good luck.
Get in here. Frank Esposito?
Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Frank Esposito, St. Charles. I really should have spoke at the first meeting, because everything you did at that first meeting kind of throws the sheets out. But I think the principles are what I'm trying to get at. So I asked that if a slide be put up there so that the audience could get an opportunity to see it, but it's a little too small. So I will try to go through this. If you look at the side that has most of the data on it, the ordinance back 22-201 set the salaries for the sheriff, the county clerk, and the treasurer, as you have been talking about. And it's, as you indicated, they're, they are supposed to get a 2% increase over the next two years. The next section, proposed increases, the first, a column after the title indicated the salaries that I was able to determine that these positions have. And they, they may not be exact, because like the auditor, this has $98,000. When I was thinking about running for auditor's position, I was told around 88,000. That's not the reason that I didn't run. My wife and my kids said, no way are you going to run for that position at my age. Anyway, it looks like, if I understand what happened at that last meeting, you're proposing that every position gets $109,242 starting December 2nd, 2024. Now, let's take a look at some of these things. If that's true, the recorder is actually going to take a decrease? I don't think that's going to happen. And my understanding at this point is instead of 3% increase across the board on all of these positions, it's going to be 2%. So please, someone let me know if I'm mistaken. As far as the board chair, it's 106,000 with no increases across the board. Let's skip that initial analysis down at the bottom, because what you've done whacked that all out. If you turn the page, on the backside, I tried to take the chairperson's salary and make a comparison similar to what was done in the 20-201 analysis that was done. So for Kane County, we've got a budget of $346,000 in 2022, okay? And then the population was 516, workforce was 1,263, the county chair was 105,000. Then I listed the other counties that are somewhat comparable to Kane. I left off the ones that are really small with the numbers that didn't matter. But there are rankings next to each of these numbers. So as far as budget is concerned, it looks as though we've got the fourth highest budget. As population, we've got the fourth highest population. The workforce, we're fourth. The county chair has a salary at, currently, that's in fifth position. Now, the last column was something that was used in that last analysis, the population relativity, with Kane County being 100%. If, if that's 100%, then. If if that's one hundred percent, then if you take the chair's salary and divide it by the um, the popul- or the population, that means it's like twenty cents per person in this county. It's costing us for her to be in that position. Interestingly, look down at DuPage County. They are at a hundred and eighty percent of us. And their their person gets fifteen cents. So to try to get through everything, the elected officials are public service. They know going in what they're going to make. Shouldn't we be checking into job performance? Isn't that a criteria that should be addressed? And what about the amount of work? That was indicated previously that some people have a tremendous amount of work in comparison to other people, but you're paying all of them the same. And lastly, I've got to say, you've decided that you're going to give yourself a thirty thousand dollar increase. It was brought up at one of the meetings that the chairperson was at the meeting that decided that she would get one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And it was said that maybe she should not have been involved in that process. I bring it up to you. I don't know what would be done, but I'm not sure you are in a position that you should say, my salary is going to go up to thirty thousand dollars in two years. Put it before the people of the county and let them decide if you're going to get an increase. Because otherwise, I don't know how you would ever get an increase. Thank you.
Mark Ebbler?
Good afternoon, members of the county board. I definitely respect the work that all we all did who were on the executive committee. There were definitely uh more than one eight seven seven eight votes. And now there are nine additional members who will be casting the final votes on the amended as amended resolution that was passed by a fourteen to one vote. So I definitely commend what you're about to do to pass for passage. And you exceeded my expectations concerning my suggested board chair salary compared to what the final resolution has at a hundred six thousand per year with no increases, knowing that potentially you will be going to a county administrator and uh to commend that the executive committee did the right thing. I will ask the full county board will do the right thing. And thank you so much. And after what we saw in Springfield early this morning, their last vote was taken at four forty two A M. I'm thankful that all of y'all aren't going to be trying to break that record this afternoon. So y'all have a great day. I yield my my time.
It's early. Ms. York?
I called.
Rand York?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for hearing me today. Uh, and I hope you hear this in the spirit in which it is given. Um, my name is Rand York. I live in Big Rock. I work with Americans for Prosperity. We're a nonpartisan organization whose motto is that famous quote from Frederick Douglass, I will unite with anyone to do right and with no one to do wrong. And you'll find that quote in his portrait in every one of our offices across the United States. But right now I'm speaking as a citizen and a voter in Kane County. Uh, when I discovered the salary of the Kane County Board Chair and uh other salaries, I was surprised at the what seemed to me to be the extravagance of it. But this proposal for a raise, if I were a county board member in it for the money, I would definitely vote for increases of any kind, anywhere, all the time. As Frank Zappa famously quipped, we're only in it for the money. But I was pleased to observe the change in trajectory during the executive committee meeting. I was very pleased. I sat through that whole meeting and I thought you guys are doing are 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 heading in the right direction in your discussions. So thank you for that. You know, Frank Zappa was entertainment, but this is government. This is public service. And upon further inquiry, I discovered that tax increases are somehow being championed among some of the folks here, even after the county made an additional fifteen million dollars last last year just by switching banks. Tax increases hurt the middle class and the working class most of all. It was Aristophanes who said, look at the orators in our republic. As long as they are poor, both state and people can only praise their uprightness. But once they are fattened on public funds, they conceive a hatred for justice. They plan intrigues against the people and they attack democracy. Now that was four hundred B C. Self-interest among public servants has been around a long time. But you have an opportunity here today to be genuine public servants by saying not here, not now and not on our watch. Increases are not needed. Current salaries are sufficient. And these proposals are not in the interest of the citizens of Kane County, should be rejected. I'm frankly surprised that we're even having this debate. Thank you for hearing me out.
Can't hear you. Thank.
Shal Batag, um, that's a hard act to follow. I would totally agree. Um, as we're coming in here every month, we're seeing how things work. I'm asking again for probably the third time if all of you could just walk downtown Geneva and ask the shop owners how great business is doing and if they're worried about whether their doors are going to be open at by the end of the year. They're all struggling. Um, regarding the elected officials, we're talking anywhere from twenty two to twenty five thousand dollar increase. I know no one that is getting these types of wage increases right now. People are happy to have a job and also hard to get a job right now. And that's why there's candidates who are running who are happy to get that job with the uh stated incomes right now. Board members, I admire so many of you that do the work. As you can see, it's a cast of characters here and I'm learning who does the work and who doesn't. And some of you do do uh need an increase. I would agree. You guys do a lot of work, go through a bazillion pages of materials if you do it properly and some fall short. Um, I mean, ideal world, I would give everyone a giant raise and cut the board down to five people. Orange County, California, I believe, has five members of the board and that's that's that would be amazing. I don't know how that could go. As far as the chair goes, I would love to know if Vern Tepey or Kias or Cheryl Strathman would be fighting as hard for such a giant increase if it was Lance Bell who's running against Madam Chair. Um, it makes no sense. She has a very limited job of setting the agenda and running the meeting. She's not the county administrator.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was not five minutes.
Five minutes.
Mr. Tepey, that was a minute forty eight right now.
So anyway, as I was saying, I I would love to know um how much political, you know, influence or emotion is behind this. Um, her job is to set the agenda to run the meetings. She spends a lot of time in Washington, D C and other diplomatic, uh, you know, hobnobbing with others. And she's not here day to day. It's not a full-time job per se. I know the elected officials, some uh Ms. Molina had mentioned in the past, they actually had other jobs in addition to being, say, the coroner or the auditor because they oversee the departments. They're not necessarily there for forty hours. Um, again, twenty five thousand increase, that's an average. She's averaging almost thirty five thousand with a proposal now plus the three percent increases per year. Um, I just want to say, you know, I I don't know what we need to do. Is there? I know the administrator sounds amazing, could be money saving. I know the recorder, there was discussion if we wanted to take that position and 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 put it with the uh county clerk that we could possibly put that on a referendum and get rid of that position and that would save a lot of money. Could we do that with the clerk or the madam chair's position? Because a lot of boards don't have uh uh, you know, uh chairs like that. They are a part of the board and they're not getting paid that giant money. Um, I just want to remind you, everybody, it's not, it's like when you hire an employee, you give them an option to take the job or not. Everyone still has somebody running against them. And it's not just the money, the salary. They get benefits and they get at least a ten percent employer uh income that we need to pay as taxpayers, employer tax, I'm sorry. And the I M R F is a percentage of the increase. That's a lot of money. You guys are talking about being broke and not passing the budget and, you know, falling short and this and that. It it again, there's still no way of absorbing all these increases. There it's a lot of money every year. Um, lastly, I just ask that you guys talk to your constituents. It it's it's hard out there. People are struggling. And this this job i- is it, if it's full time or part time, you know, thank God people are willing to do this because, I mean, I've talked to a lot of people and people don't necessarily want to run for office. It's a public service and sometimes people, you know, are here for a long time and they forget that. But I just ask that you at this time put everything on pause because we are in a really financial crisis. I believe it's going to get harder and harder in these businesses. It's really hard to tell people, oh, you know, these people are giving these giant increases. Thank you.
All right, we uh have one key item on the agenda, which is uh the ordinance amending the salaries of elected officials. Um, want to thank Mr. Ford and our fort- our support staff for doing a yeoman's job and getting the wording done and getting it passed out on the modifications to that. And I will uh share my screen. And this in effect shows the um recommendations that were made by the executive committee. So may I have a a motion on this item so we can begin discussion?
Bates Moose.
Kias second.
I tried Gums and Kias. All right. And any discussion? Kias.
Um, just to start, I would suggest that we address this in the three parts that we did as as exec, which was the uh county board or the the officers, the county board and then the uh chair.
So you want to talk about the first four?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Sheprow.
Mr. Sheprow.
You can discuss them. You can discuss them that way, but you can't hear me?
No, turn your microphone. Is it on?
Here, I say Frank.
Oh, no, it's not. Sorry. I I can't tell the difference between a light and a bright green. Uh, the the procedure would be if if you want to proceed at this point, you can either do it by way of amending the ordinance that is now on the floor and you can amend it in pieces as you did at executive. Uh, or you could have a general discussion and as the board chooses, then proceed to either vote it up or down or to offer amendments.
Mr. Chair Gums. Um, just my two cents to be effective with our time instead of breaking it up. Perhaps we have discussion on it before we decide to break it up. I'm I'm just, that's.
Sounds great. I don't think it'll happen.
I mean.
The absence of a motion to amend, it's on the floor for general discussion.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation as well. Just bring it all up in parts. If people want to jump around, they're going to jump around either way regardless of whether it's being brought up separately or as a part of a larger discussion. What I would tell you for time savings purposes, once you guys have kind of talked out an issue, somebody make a formal motion for what you want it to be. Either it gets voted up or voted down individually of each position. And then once you worked out your amendments under each one, then you take the larger vote on whether or not you want to pass it as amended.
Well, then I would suggest that we start with the uh electeds, the four electeds we had originally and I would I would suggest that we accept what the uh executive committee suggested, which was the a hundred and nine thousand.
I wrote it down.
Two forty two. Hundred and ten.
I.
It's on the. Hundred and nine, two, four, two.
Plus two percent. Unless you want to make a change to that, I don't think you need to.
Okay, well, then is there anybody that wants to change?
If you want to make a motion to change that, we don't need a motion to approve it.
Correct. No.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, well, does anybody want amended?
And Ms. Lewis?
No, I don't want to amend that, but I would like to amend E, which is the chairman's salary to make that equivalent to the other four positions, which is the one oh nine, two forty two.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the county board chair's compensation to a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty two plus two percent increase for the next three years.
Correct.
And Ms. Bates seconded that.
No, Ms. Strathman.
Oh, Ms. Strathman, okay. Uh, discussion?
Yeah, can I start?
Sure.
Okay, um, I feel that she or he, depending on that position, that they do just as much work as the other elected officials. And I think it's um a slap in the face to that position to say that they are less valuable than our other elected officials. And to say, well, we're not going to touch this because we're going to go to a county administrator in the next few years, I don't think it's valid because we don't know that yet. And we can always, you know, change it at that time.
Yes.
Leslie Juve.
Ms. Juve?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate um what Ms. Lewis has said. However, I stand by what the the mandated position requirements are. And I I don't care who's in the job. I think that the job is sufficiently compensated for what is required. I think as Ms. Gums had said in executive that, you know, the county board has really not been um, not been stepping up in doing doing the yeoman's work. We we do do the work, but but we've we've let a lot of things get delegated just because it's easier or because we don't have time or because we don't want four hour long meetings. But it doesn't matter how long our meetings are. If we get the work done, we get the work done. And so I for one will not be supporting changing the compensation for the county board position.
Okay, Mr. Linder?
I think, you know, historically, the county board chair's job has ballooned beyond what the code, the county code calls for. Under Chair McConaughey and and uh our current treasurer is when he was chair, they assumed things that made the job bigger. And the current chair has sort of stepped into that and found it difficult to back off of it. Uh, I'm really struck between the amount of time that that this current chair puts in and the amount of time and and the scope of authority that the the county code actually calls for. And they're two different things and I I'm just, I'm stuck. I'll be honest with you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's uh do a roll call on the amendment. We're talking about amending the county chair, county board chair's compensation to a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty two dollars plus a two percent increase for the next three years.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one more comment?
We already. Voting. Okay.
Okay.
Allen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Doherty? Doherty? Davis?
Davis, yes. Davis, no. Okay.
Ford?
Ford, no.
Gums?
Gums, no.
Ickball?
Ball, no.
Juve?
Juve, no.
Kenyon?
No.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, no.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, no.
Molina?
Molina, no.
Roth?
Roth, no.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, no.
Silva?
Silva, no.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Serge's?
Serge's, no.
Tarver?
Thank you.
Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tappy?
Tappy, yes.
Gums? Young?
Was Williams counted?
Williams is not here.
14 to 9, no.
14 to 9, no.
I just want to make sure he's called. Okay, that did not pass? Open for discussion. Mr. Linder, you still have your hand up? Thank you. No, you don't. Any discussion?
Sanchez.
Oh. Nina?
Um, thank you, Chairman Tappy. Um, I, I'd just like to go on the record and state I'm disappointed with this whole process. On May 10th, a group of advisory board members, advisory committee members met. I'm not sure who put that advisory committee together, how they were decided upon, what type of experience they had to review these salaries. And then after they met and the proposed increases were, were voted on, then we had a county advisory committee, which I sat on and Mr. Chair, Mr. Serge's chaired. We didn't agree on any of the proposes, the proposed increases. So we didn't provide, we didn't provide any kind of advice. It was two to two, voting for the increases and two voting against all the increases. At this point, I know, I'm, I'm not sure how we even got to 109,000 for each of these elected officials. We haven't even gone through what their position entails. We haven't discussed the other benefits that they have, the stipends that they're given by the state. We haven't discussed the amount of hours they put into each of their positions. And somehow we got to 109,000 in the last three hours of debate. So I'm just going to go on the record and state my disappointment with this whole process. We knew four years ago that we had until June 3rd to come up with these salary increases. Yet we waited until the primary occurred and we waited until we knew the two people who were going to be selected. And I'm, again, I'm, I'm, I'm really disappointed with the way this whole process worked. I think we could have been more transparent with our citizens and had more feedback. So I'll just go on the record now and state I'm voting against all of these increases. Thank you.
Ms. Molina, just as a point of information, for the top four positions there, the 109,242 was determined by the executive committee. And the discussion that was going on was to make their compensation the same as what had happened for the treasurer and the county clerk. So I guess
I understand that, I understand that, Mr. Tappy, you've been on both, on both of the other committees where it started off at 90,000 and 89,000 and 88,000 and it ballooned up to 130,000. Just two, two hours ago, we changed it to 109,000. I, I, I've been part of this whole process. My statement is I'm disappointed that in the last, that it took two weeks to do this versus, I think this required a large amount of time from the county board to actually go through all of these positions and not do it in three meetings.
Mr. Sanchez?
Oh, he's right here. There he is. He didn't come back. So How do you, how'd you do that?
I just think for this position, we really should be looking at the future. And if the future is, we are a big county that needs to kind of, you know, start acting like it more and more. We have to go in the way of, of an administrator. I'm a broken record, I know, but I'm going to say it over and over again. It's a cause of a lot of dysfunction to not have that for a county of this size and a board of this size. I mean, my suggestion would be that we would actually even lower the salary for this position, knowing that we would be moving towards an administrator position for the county. I, this, the chairman should be kind of a ceremonial position. I mean, if you look at the county code, that's what it is. Run meetings, you know, appoint, make appointments. And then obviously there are the things out in the public, you know, ribbon cuttings kind of being the face and the voice of the county in some way. But the idea of this person running everything is not what this position should be, in my opinion. So I would even say, you know, looking at the future, we would, we would want to lower the salary if we do have a county administrator. So I would be in favor even of lowering the salary from where it is currently to, I mean, what do we do at the Forests? Or are we double what we have? Well, let's say 70,000, you know, something like that. So I would actually make an amendment to lower it to 70,000 in anticipation that we're going to be moving forward with a different kind of organization in the future. And I'd ask for a second.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion and a second to amend the county board chair's salary to $70,000. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the state's attorney.
Sorry, Ms. Juve?
I have a question for the state's attorney. Are we allowed to lower a salary once it's been raised?
Absolutely. If it's for the succeeding term, you have the right to do that. It would not take effect during the term of, of the current term of office.
Okay, may, may I ask another clarifying question? Mr. San, I wondered if Mr. Sanchez's lowering of the salary was contingent on hiring an administrator? Because at this time, we're not talking about hiring an administrator and I think that muddies the water of what's on the floor.
That's a question for the state's attorney. You can't make it contingent on an event that you don't know would happen.
So, so I'm to understand Mr. Sanchez is just making a motion to lower the salary of the chairman, period? With no contingencies at all? Correct, Mr. Sanchez?
Well, that would be correct simply because we can't put any contingencies into it. Whatever we do today, we're locked in for four years, is my understanding. And if in that time, we're going to have a position that pays 250,000, just throwing a number out that's been used before and maybe even a deputy under them, that's around 125, 150. You know, we're going to want to seek savings in other positions, especially if we know the county board chair isn't having to do all of these things or isn't even assumed to do these things. It's a, it's a statement that moves us in that direction, looking to the future of what we really want to do.
Okay, any further discussion?
Linder, please.
Mr. Linder?
I, I'm uncertain about the county board administrator position, other than to say, I think it would be, by the time we study it, discuss it and post it and hire it, it'd probably be three years anyway. So I, I think we can go ahead and act for four years and, and not be concerned about the county board administrator that we've not even really talked about.
Agreed.
Thank you. Dr. Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can't say right now if I'm in favor of this or not. This is something that would take some consideration and some input and some understanding of what the role is and what happens on a daily basis. Because I, for one, as a board member, I, I'm representing all of King County and sometimes I receive calls from other parts that are not District 7, which I happily take because I am a public servant. So I, I need more information. I need more time to come to this decision. I'm not saying I'm against it. It sounds, it sounds like an idea, but I definitely need more time.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yeah, what are we voting for?
B, this would be to set the county board chair's salary at $70,000 a year.
Allen?
Allen, no.
Bates?
Oh.
Berman?
Berman, no.
Doherty?
Oh, yes.
Davis?
Davis, no.
Ford? Yeah. Gums?
No.
Ickball?
Ickball, no.
Juve?
Juve, no.
Canyon?
No.
Kias?
Kias, no. No.
Lewis, no.
Linder?
Linder, no.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Sorry, I have to be a no on this.
Strathman?
No.
Serge's?
No.
Tarver?
Tarver's a no.
Tappy?
No.
Williams? Young?
Yes.
And let's go back to Ford. You there?
17.
Okay. The amendment fails?
Where are we going? Well, that's the low.
Chairman Tappy?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I'd be willing to try one now. I'd like, I'd like to make the motion that we set the county board chairman's salary at precisely where it is now.
Your motion is to set the salary to 105,328.
Second.
Yes.
Serge's second. Seconds. Mr. Ickball seconded. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Young?
Yep, Mr. Tappy, David Young. I agree with Ms. Molina, what she said before. You're, you're acting as a, as a public servant. And I am with her about this whole process. And I am for keeping all of the elected officials' salaries exactly where they're at. The, you know, these officials know, you're here to do public service. And in, in my opinion, you, you do sacrifice to do that. And coming to a, and, and being part of a government salary and everything that comes along with it. You're not going to get rich here. You, some of these do have pensions, though, and you will get a nice, none of them have pensions?
Oh, I'm sorry, board members don't.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the circuit clerk, the recorder auditor, county board. So, you know, you, you, you do need to take that into effect that these people will have these pensions. So, and, and I will go ahead and be voting yes with Mr. Davis.
Any other discussion? Looking for hands up?
Um, I, I think this is what I didn't get to say on the last one. So I get the last, I get it in. I, I think when people look at the duties of the county chair, they're not, it, it also says other duties as they arise. And I think it's the job of the, of the chairperson and or woman, future or present, to rise to those, to those jobs. Sometimes it's being an ambassador to other counties. Sometimes it's taking on jobs that don't fall under the standing committees right away until they've been examined. One duty might be getting rid of the toll on Long Meadow Parkway. Some, sometimes the chair has to step in and do some of those jobs. So I don't think, I think just looking at, you know, running the board meetings is simplifying. That's an oversimplification.
105,328. Okay. Any further discussion? Is to set the county board chair's salary at 105,328 for the next four years. Please, roll call, please.
Allen?
Allen, no.
Bates?
Bates, no.
Berman?
Berman, no.
Doherty?
Doherty, yes.
Davis?
Davis, yes.
Ford?
Ford, no.
Ford, no. Gums? Ickball?
Ickball, yes.
Juve, I.
Canyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, no.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, no.
Serge's?
Serge's, yes.
Tarver?
Tarver, no.
Tappy?
Tappy, no.
Williams? Young?
Yes.
All right?
Yep.
14 to 8.
I have 15.
15 days, sorry.
Thank you.
Were they?
15 to 8.
Thank you.
And is there any discussion on the board member compensation increasing to $30,000 effective December 1, 2026? Mr. Young?
I, I, I go back to what I've been saying before. Everyone knows that and Molina said it properly, the extra $5,000, it's, people aren't doing this to, to make money. You know, you, you do this to, to do public service. You do this because you want to. You do, you, you, so
That'll reward.
Okay. Well, you, you're here to do public service and you're here to, to represent certain people that you, that you've, that are in your district. And you're here to, to do that service and even to learn. Like, I mean, I've had a, it's been a learning experience, I guess I'll say that. And I don't think that increasing a salary to $25,000 or $30,000 is, is not going to make a dent. And I, I think that we can save that and use it somewhere else. And, and I think Ron Ford said that we should just take care of the other employees instead. Thank you.
Ms. Molina?
Um, thank you, Chairman Tappy. I don't want to take up too much of this, this committee's time. But I would like to say that 5,000 a year times 24 is $120,000. So when we look at the future of King County and where we're financially, you know, where we're at and our, you know, quote unquote, financial cliff, 120,000 times two is 240,000. That's a chunk of change that I think we need to use in a different area, not for board salaries. So I will be voting against the increase as well. Thank you.
Mr. Canyon?
Canyon, this will not affect me because I'm not going to be here. But you can, if you choose, you can give the money back to the county. There you go. Or you could give money like I do to the downstairs, or you could give it to the Forest Reserve Foundation. You don't have to keep it. But some people might find a use for it.
Barbara Hernandez gave it back.
Good points.
Ms. Gums?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gums. To the point that we are in public service not to make money, I absolutely agree with that. However, I don't want to limit the public service to those that can only afford to do it. I think by default, you exclude an entire demographic of individual who can not engage in governing. And I will be supporting this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Davis?
A lot of excellent points. Like Mr. Canyon, I will not be here beyond this term. And I will say that I, I believe that the value of a county board member is in excess of the 25. That you are asked, as it's been pointed out, to actually be the leader of the county. Our code is, is rife with the phrase, you know, with the advice and consent of the board. You are the administrator. You're responsible for millions of dollars every year for the livelihood of 1,300 plus employees that serve more than half a million people. So value wise, I would like it to be known that I think you are all worth far more than the 25. And to Ms. Gums' point, And to Ms. Gums' point, in public service, you know, it's unfortunate that we, that this setup does exclude a lot of people. And going from 25 to 30 is not going to change that. Until we get to a time where we can have a discussion that doesn't demonize all taxes, because there is a cost of doing business and a value to what we provide, I think we're going to have to stay where we are. And so I would offer, as I did in the last one, an amendment, a motion that the salaries be set at 25,000 for each of these four years.
I will second that.
Who seconded?
I am.
Yeah. The, the motion is to amend the ordinance, okay? Motion is to amend the ordinance to make, to retain the salary of board members at 25,000 a year. Okay? Seconded by Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ichbal, you had your hand up earlier?
No, I wanted to second it. Uh, I also, also, I would like to add that it is not the 25,000 we are getting. There is a health insurance, there's a dental insurance, and possibly it used to be pension as well. So, the 25 is just a part of it, not the whole package.
Yes, sir. As a point of clarification, there's an option for that and not everybody takes it.
Right.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mr. Doherty, you have your hand raised? Mr. Doherty? All right, anybody else? Sorry, Mr. Dart, the starting.
Oops, what happened?
We lost you.
We lost you, Mr. Doherty. Your hand is raised?
Sorry.
Okay.
Uh, I lost my train of thought. I, 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 I think that the board members are undercompensated for what they do. They don't just show up to seven meetings a month. They are going to meetings with constituents, meetings with townships. They are getting around and they should be paid for it. And I think they're woefully underpaid. Now I'm done.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Young?
Could, could you remind, uh, Mr. Doherty what we're voting on, please?
We would be voting on an amendment to retain the current $25,000 salary for the board members through four years. In the next four years.
Thank you.
Okay. Please do a roll call, please.
Allen?
Allen, no.
Bates?
No.
Berman?
Berman, no.
Doherty?
No. No.
Okay.
Davist, yes.
Ford? Ford? Gums?
Gums, no.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Tubi?
Tubi, I.
Kenyon?
No.
Kias?
Kias, no.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes. Or, excuse me, I yes to go to the 25.
Louis?
Louis, no.
Linder?
Linder, no.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
So, a yes vote is to keep it at 25?
Yes.
Yes.
Strathman?
No.
Serge's?
Serge's, yes.
Tarver?
Tarver, no.
Pepe?
Tepe, no.
Williams? Young?
Yes.
And let's go back. Ford?
Okay, the amendment failed. May, may I suggest that we vote on the final resolution?
Mr. Chair, I don't even know what that is anymore.
Okay. I think it's on the screen. I think it's accurate on the screen now.
Okay.
In effect, so.
Live editing. Yeah.
So, it, the, the proposed would be the 109,242 plus 2% for the circuit clerk, recorder, auditor and corner. Uh, retain the county board chairs, compensation the same, and to increase the county board at $30,000 effective 12/1/2026. Okay.
Tarver, make a motion for that.
We, we already have a motion and a second.
Already have a motion. We are just, we are now voting on the motion that was originally presented as amended.
Gums and Kias originally did the motion and second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Point of clarification, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Microphone, please.
So, are we voting that the salaries would increase to 109 for the four individuals up there?
The 109,242 would go in effect December 1, uh, 2024. And then December 1 of 2025, it would be 2% more. And the actual amount is on the resolution that has been passed out.
Okay, got it. Got it. Thank you.
So, that's the motion that we're voting on. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Allen, I.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Doherty?
Doherty, yes.
Davist?
I, I'm sorry, clarification, you, you're saying we're voting only on the four county elected officials right now?
Everything.
Yeah. So, it's the increase for them. It's staying this, it's static level for county board chair and, and doing the board members 30,000 in the final two years.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Davist, no.
So.
Ford?
Ford, no.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, no.
Tubi?
Tubi, no.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, no.
Louis?
Louis, no.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, no.
Roth?
Roth, no.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, no.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Serge's?
Sorry, Serge's, no.
Tarver?
Serge's, no.
Thank you. Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
And Young?
No.
It passes.
Yeah, it passes.
Mr. Chair, this is Serge signing off. Vern?
Thank you.
Okay, bye Cliff. We heard you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
It passed.
Yeah. Okay, the, the motion is passed with a vote of 12 to 11. So, you're going to love this. May I have a motion and second to move into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including discussion of whether a particular parcel should be acquired?
Can I second?
By Kenyon?
Hold on. I thought it was for litigation. Yeah, the, that is correct. We, I would also, something that just popped up today, I would also ask to go into closed session for pending litigation.
And, okay. May I have a motion and a second to move into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including discussion of whether a particular parcel should be acquired as well as pending litigation? Mr. Kenyon moved?
I, sorry. Wish.
Can I second?
We're approaching fourth.
Okay.
We need a roll?
Come on.
It's roll call.
Roll call. We need a roll call.
Have a roll call to go in.
Roll call, please, to go, to go into executive session.
Yes.
Go in.
So, we need to do the roll call before we go into.
Quiet, please, please. Thank you. Complete our business.
John, you can get out.
Allen?
Allen, I.
Go into executive session?
Allen, I.
No, we were told the.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman? Doherty?
Doherty, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichbal? Tubi?
Tubi, I.
Kenyon? Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
I didn't.
Tina?
Molina, yes.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman? Serge's?
Serge's gone.
Okay.
Let's shade.
Uh, Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Uh, what, Young?
Young's gone.
Okay. So, they all just left at.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Please give me a few minutes to move everyone in the Zoom call over to the closed session. Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Please give me a few minutes to move everyone in the Zoom call over to the closed session. Thank you.